It is now six o'clock, November 20th, 2018. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council's sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Negretti? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Negretti absent.
The invocation will be delivered by Father Patrick Travers of Holy Innocents Catholic Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bessenger, so please stand.
Let us bow our heads and pray. As always, it is best to be here at this City Council meeting to participate in the freedom to meet and assemble within our government, and so I thank you, Lord, on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. We pray for our mayor and for the city officials, in particular this council who participated and affected by our recent elections. We pray for their work in guiding our community, most importantly, help them remain aware of the welfare and needs of our city, and while promoting peace, order, and justice, and the wisdom to govern with a proper decorum and discernment of goodwill. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony and give each of them a joy in the tasks set before them, and in so doing, attaining a personal peace in their lives that we are all in need of. We pray for the communities and towns that the fires destroyed in California, and in so doing, have a greater appreciation of our city and all we have to be thankful for this Thanksgiving season. We bow in gratitude of your greatness, love, and mercy for us, and we ask all of this in the name of your most cherished son, Jesus Christ, amen.
So, Councilmember Jim Kennedy, would you like to go down and they will be, you will be receiving some recognition and certificates? I believe they're here, from Senator Scott Wilk's office. I believe Rebecca Tennyson is here. Is she here? No? Assemblyman Jay Obernolte, Chris Nunes?
Councilmember Gomez, could you possibly come back up so we have a quorum still? Thank you.
My name is Chris Nunes, and it's my great pleasure to be here on behalf of our State Assemblyman, Mr. Jay Obernolte. Every now and then, we have the fantastic opportunity of honoring somebody and recognizing their outstanding works or extending achievement. Mr. Kennedy has been a stakeholder here in the city for a long time, but really has, as his wife put it, more than committed to doing his part here in our community. We want to thank you for the terms of service that you've performed here. Congratulate you on the retirement that you're finally getting to. I understand you have some big plans coming up and some vacations. Very glad that you're going to be taking advantage. Hope that we can still rely on you as a pillar here in the community. So, thank you so much for your service, congratulations, and best wishes to the entire California state legislature. I send you with this resolution from the state.
And from Supervisor Robert Lovinggood's office, we have Regina Weatherspoon-Bell.
Good evening. How special is this? It is indeed my pleasure to bring you this resolution, which I am not going to read all of it, although you have earned every word of it. But it's my pleasure and privilege to be here tonight on behalf of the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, who is also our first district supervisor, Robert Lovinggood. And I want to say to you that the supervisor asked if I would share with you our gratefulness in the way that you have led. You have led with dignity, you have led with integrity, you have led ethically, and we greatly appreciate those footsteps that you have taken and the imprints that you have made for those to come behind that can follow. We also want to thank you for your service to this council, but your service prior to that, to several councils and commissions and boards. You have created quite a legacy, and that legacy stands as a sterling example of great leadership here in the High Desert. And so for that, the supervisor says, "Thank you," and we really appreciate the privilege of having the opportunity to work with you over these past two terms. Congratulations, hope you have nothing but joy from this moment on, as you go back home to be with your beautiful wife and share just nothing but sheer joy. So, congratulations to you.
Now, we have Rebecca Tennyson with Senator Scott Wilk's office.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Garcia, Victorville City Council, citizens of Victorville, and special guests tonight. It is a pleasure to join you, and I have the distinct privilege to present this certificate of recognition on behalf of our State Senator Scott Wilk and the California State Senate, to be presented to Jim Kennedy in honor and recognition as you nobly retire from the Victorville City Council, commemorated on this 20th day of November, 2018. Whereas...
Are you going to read them? No. Read them.
They know me.
That's great.
They know me. Don't worry, there's only one whereas. Whereas, due to the integrity and professionalism which he fulfilled his duties, Jim Kennedy has been an invaluable asset to the City of Victorville and the citizens he serves. Thank you, Jim, for bestowing honorable leadership to your constituents and throughout the state of California. Throughout California during November 2010 through November 2018. I was wondering how many years? Senator Wilk extends his sincerest best wishes for your every future success. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you. One more?
Don't worry, just one more. Congratulations, Jim.
Do I have his, the city's? I didn't realize how weakling I am. Okay. This is presented to Councilmember Jim Kennedy in appreciation of eight years of service to the City of Victorville from 2010 through 2018. And Jim, I don't even know where to begin, thanking you for everything that you have done for all the community, the entire High Desert and just Victorville, the expertise that you brought to our city, the void that you are leaving cannot be filled by anyone unless they have what you have. And, my gosh. My gosh, it's outstanding. Because of you, we have maintained a balanced budget. You have brought so much to our city that I don't even have the words to thank you. All I can say is, thank you so much for giving your time, your energy, and I hope that you and Jeannie will enjoy your retirement, you're not retiring, but away from this anyhow, and no stress, and just enjoy, and because the two of you have something so special in your marriage that many couples have, and I'm very touched by that too. Thank you.
I'd like to step in just for two seconds, as we put something together as a staff as well. But I'm Keith Metzler, I'm the City Manager, and I've had the opportunity to work with Jim for almost 20 years in some capacity, one capacity or the other, and certainly the most memorable have been the last eight years with you here as a councilperson, and certainly have appreciated your leadership, your wisdom, and everything that you've offered in terms of expertise. But I had actually taken the opportunity to talk with a number of staff walking through the organization and ask for one word that best describes you, and the most common response I got from the staff was thoughtful. And I agreed with that because over the course of you serving this council and all of your actions, all of your deliberations, I think that's one of the most fairest things we got from you, was that you were thoughtful in everything that you had, and that matters not only to us as staff, but certainly to the residents of our community. So, one thing that we wanted to do, just to show our appreciation as the staff, and we want you to think about us every time that you see this, not many know that we have our own sign shop in our Public Works Engineering Department. So, one of the things that I asked the Public Works Sign Crew to do is put together a street sign for you, and this is from the staff, and I want you every time to, every time you see it, to think of it as a thank you from the staff of this organization. Congratulations.
Jim, Congressman Cook's representative is here also, Christopher Porter.
I think Wassay was going to come tonight, but he couldn't make it. So, I'm not going to read all of this, but I'm going to read probably about half of it, if that's okay.
It's the House of Representatives. We don't... He could go on for days.
In addition to serving on the City Council as Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and all the boards that he's served on, and serving as a delegate as well, during his time on the council, Jim has been a passionate advocate for Victorville and its residents. He supported key infrastructure projects, including the Nisqually-Lamesa interchange, which provided a key transit corridor to help alleviate traffic congestion. Jim also fought to keep Victorville residents safe and consistently voted to add additional sheriffs, deputies, and firefighters to the city budget. I thank Councilmember Jim Kennedy for his leadership and dedication to public service on behalf of Victorville residents. Jim has been a true model of civility and decorum on the Victorville City Council, and he will be sorely missed. So, on behalf of Congressman Cook, I want to present you with this congressional insert and this plaque, and want to wish you the best in all your endeavors.
Now you can do your little speech. Yes, now you can.
Actually, I would never have been Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem, but I appreciate the thought. I just would like to take a couple of minutes and talk about this city, not me, but we. Like to talk about the group up here and some who are no longer here, Ryan McEckern, Mike Rothschild, Rudy Cabrerales, Angela Vias, and there's... We've worked together over the last eight years. I'd like to tell you where we were, what we've done, and where we are today. When I came on the council in 2010, we were recovering from the worst financial crisis our country had experienced since the Great Depression. The general fund was running at about a $3.5 million deficit. Our revenues had dropped from about $60 million in the general fund in 2006 to $45 million in 2009. In three years, we dropped 25% of our revenues, and we had to figure out what to do. Property taxes had dropped, and SCLA was in default on all of their redevelopment bonds. City staff was cut by about a third and went to 36-hour work weeks. But, by 2013, as a result of diligence work by the staff and this council, who was committed to living within our means, we budgeted, we balanced the general fund budget in 2013. In the last year, we paid off the last of our interfund loans, the hiring freeze has ended, the City of Victorville financially is in solid and stable condition. The Mall of Victor Valley, in 2012, we signed an agreement, Ryan had his hand in this, with Mesa Rich, to work on renovating the Victor Valley Mall. We were in a declining sales tax situation with the mall, and as a result of that renovation, sales tax have risen, we've attracted Macy's and Dick's Sporting Goods, Penny's expanded their place there. Shopping at the mall today is a different experience than it was in 2012. Okay? Staff helped me with this, so I've got some visuals up on the screen, keep your eye there. Industrial wastewater treatment plant, this is not a well-known project for the City of Victorville by the public, but we built this plant in 2010. It allowed us to attract the Dr. Pepper-Snaple bottling plant. Without it, we would never have gotten them here. It has also served other industrial development at the base. This plant produces the reclaimed water that we sell every single day to the High Desert Power Project. It's been a tremendous source of revenues. Southern California Logistics Airport, gosh, what a success story this has been. Make, I gotta get to my notes. Dr. Pepper-Snaple, United Furniture, Arden Companies, Newell Brands, M&amp;M Mars. M&amp;M Mars was thinking of leaving, they moved from Foxborough to the base and maintained those jobs in Victorville. Plastipack, we have almost $3.5 million square feet of manufacturing, distribution, and warehousing at SCLA. It's been a tremendous success story. And Boeing has put a 100,000-square-foot hangar that they are occupying, and they're using it for flight testing and aircraft assembly. Boeing's been a tremendous tenant for us at the airport. What a story. Road improvements, at long last, the Lamesa-Nisqually interchange, Ryan, raise your hand. Big hand in that. And my friend Jim Cox had something to say about that happening. Built it in 2013. Bear Valley Road construction between Amethyst and Balsam, what a project that's been to clean up that intersection at the freeway. Nine and a half miles of roadway pavement that we've done on Amethyst, Nisqually, and Lamesa. And Village Drive, the mother of all road rehabilitation projects. Village Drive, and it will finish sometime next year, am I right, Keith? This year? This year? Next month. Amazing. Water and sewer projects, this has always been close to my heart. We have replaced nine miles of small steel water lines, primarily in Old Town, but in other older parts of Victorville, nine miles. We have another four and a half miles currently under construction. We've replaced 7,000 old water laterals. Those are the lines that come from the main to your meter. They were PVC, we've replaced them in copper, and substantially reduced, if not eliminated, leakage. We've replaced 35,000 old water meters. We're replacing and relining more than three miles of old sewer lines. Believe me, if they fail, that's a mess none of us want to deal with, okay? And we have a rate plan in place to make sure we have the funds we need for those replacements in the future. That was a critical decision we've made in the last year. Public safety, our number-one job, no doubt about that. After all the budget cuts and the reductions in 2010 and '11, this council has steadily added police positions over the last eight years. Today, we have the largest police force in the city's history. Not a well-known fact, but a true statement. City staff continues to work with the HOPE program, the Sheriff's HOPE program, in our efforts to combat homelessness in Victorville. And in 2018, we launched the rebirth of our Victorville Fire Department. It was a long, difficult process, but it's in place. We're going to save almost $4 million in the next five years. We'll have 64 firefighters compared to 54 on our county fire contract. We've invested in vehicles, medic squads, and new equipment, known as fire trucks when I was a kid. Local control and efficiency was our goal, and I think we have achieved that. Fire will be under this council's control in the future. I'm also very, very happy to say that as I leave this council, I can tell you that it is in the hands, the city is in the hands of a world-class executive management team. Keith Metzler, Sophie Smith, George Harris. What a pleasure it has been working with those three people over this last year, and I think everybody on the council would agree with that. So, to my fellow council members, I want to say thank you for working together, for all of us working together. To the citizens of Victorville, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to serve and be part of this great experiment, this great experience. Exactly, an experiment. Then I want to make a few personal comments about some people that have been very important to me. My good friend Terry Caldwell, who first suggested to me that I run for the council, and I told him I wasn't in the least bit interested in doing it. My good friend Jim Cox, who absolutely convinced me that I should run for the council. My dear friend Larry Huber, who first introduced me to public service in Victorville by asking me to apply for an open position on the Water District Board, and then suffered as my campaign chairman in two election campaigns. My dear friend and planning commissioner for eight years, Paula Porter. Andre D. Bordnawski, the city attorney, and a great friend, and I don't know how I could have done my job properly without him and his advice and counsel every step of the way. Finally, the person who gets most of the credit for my lucky breaks and good fortune in my life, person who keeps me sane and stable, supports me, and when I need it, protects me from myself, just about every good thing that's happened in the second half of my life, because she agreed to share that life with me. My words are not good enough to say everything that's in my heart. Best friend I've ever had, my beautiful wife, Jeannie.
Okay, let me come down and continue with this. We have one more special presentation, and that will be for the Recognition to International We Love You Foundation. I assume you're Ernesto Senega?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I would like to present you with this certificate of recognition for your foundation's efforts to clean up and beautify the City of Victorville. On Sunday, June 10th, 2018, approximately 177 We Love You Foundation volunteers cleaned up a five-to-seven-acre area near the intersection of Seneca and Mesa Linda, filling two rolloff dumpsters with over three tons of trash and debris. This is the largest single group that has ever volunteered to do a cleanup event in Victorville. We thank you for doing such an amazing job. Thank you, and everyone that volunteered. Thank you. And this certificate reads, "Certificate of Recognition Presented to We Love You Foundation. The City of Victorville commands the We Love You Foundation and its dedicated volunteers for their commitment to improving our community. Your good deeds have helped our city and served as an example for others to follow. The City of Victorville expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude for your service to the community. Best wishes in all your future endeavors. Signed Gloria Garcia, Mayor of the City of Victorville." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much, and good evening. I wanted to share just a couple of words. I promise it won't be too long. I would like to briefly introduce who we are once again. We are the World Mission Society Church of God. The church was established in 1964. disaster response, blood drives, food drives, sock blanket drives. By putting God's word into practice, the Church of God has grown to have over 8,000 churches worldwide, and the church is currently working together also with the UN to share love, hope, help, courage, and support not only to our cities, our country, but the whole world, all 7 billion people. It is an honor to receive this award on behalf of Sangil Ja. She is the chairwoman who leads the Church of God with the love of mother because she is the mother. Lastly, we would like to thank Mayor Gloria Garcia, all the members of the council, also all of the citizens and special guests for allowing the We Love You Foundation to work together with the city of Victorville. We are also locally located here in Victorville, and we are looking forward to share the love of mother through its volunteer services. Before we finish, all members of the We Love You Foundation would also like to share a few parting words. Ready? One, two, three. We love you! We love you! We love you! Thank you so much.
I will ask our city clerk to present agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The city council of the city of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individuals' comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council.
Thank you. We will begin with appeal hearings, and we had an item A1, but that has been withdrawn, so there's nothing for that one there. So now we move on to public hearings, and we will start with item B1.
The point of order, I would still like to address my questions and add them to the board.
A public hearing to hear arguments for and against a general plan amendment to update the Victorville Old Town specific plan. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve a mitigated negative declaration, adopt Resolution Number 18-093 approving the general plan amendment, adopt Ordinance Number 2384 approving the zone change, and adopt Ordinance Number 2385 approving the specific plan amendment.
At this time, do we have council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Jim?
No.
I do, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Jim.
In the downtown plan, they referred to additional parking, converting private parking to public parking, also talk about, I believe it kind of hints of opening...
Can somebody turn off their phone there, please?
You would notice someone is trying to turn off their phone, please.
Come on, folks. There was an indication of establishing parking on 7th Street. It seemed to be there. If you establish the parking, that's going to restrict the four lanes to two. And in searching for alternate routes, it's kind of, it may occur, it's not a positive. If it does occur, there doesn't seem to be a suggested alternate route for the bottleneck. Did I read that correct?
Yes, so part of the plan, the circulation plan, and I had a quick PowerPoint, and I can go over more of the changes to 7th Street and the traffic study, how it was analyzed to allow for the reduction of one lane in each direction on 7th Street, allow for on-street parking, while also allowing for additional development, increased density in the area. So it was analyzed, that's why it's taken us two years to bring this plan before you. Full environmental analysis was done, focusing primarily on the traffic issues. Can it handle, can that area handle additional development? And can it handle the reduction of lanes on 7th Street? And the findings that we found is correct that we can.
There's also statements in regard to the current parking of a parking structure or otherwise. Is there contemplated an improvement zone for a parking structure as a part of this plan?
Long-term goals, as it starts developing further and there's a need for parking, yes. But day one, no, we're not in any position to pursue a parking structure.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, so if you have a pen available and you can jot down the notes, because I'm going to go ahead and tell you all the questions that I have, and then hope that you will be answering them. So for item B1, if you look on page four, and the timer is off right now, so I don't know what's going on, so if you make sure the timer is at its allotted time. It's right now? Okay. So the short-term road diet, it says on 7th and 8th Street. I'm not sure what that refers to. Tell me how the modification of the side streets will be alleviated with the congestion or how will it facilitate the traffic flow? If you look on chapter seven, when will the relocation of the railroad crossing be able to take effect from 6th to 7th Street? What will it look like? And can you reference a page? For chapter nine, there's a long-term priority for seven-plus years. Do you have a list and a page to refer to? So I'd like to know what we are looking for, seven-plus years, which could be eternal. And in 1995, it was 173 acres, and now in the 24th, 21st century, it's over 400 acres. What areas did Old Town acquire in that allotted time? And please explain their differences. Whose vision was implemented in Old Town?
You have 30 seconds.
And what are the areas zoned for currently lounges? Do we have lounges that are going to be allowed? I heard they're banned. For bars? How would this new plan affect current bar owners? And are there recipients of other types of businesses, such as property owners, that can develop? And what's the transition center, and how are we going to implement that if we have a lawsuit?
Madam Mayor, if I might, and I believe the presentation that Scott has for you, and though it's going to be short and brief, I think it does answer many of the questions that Councilmember Gomez has asked, but to the extent that they don't, we have taken those questions down, and perhaps we can answer them at the end.
So yeah, as City Manager Keith Metzler said, I'll have a quick presentation. I'm not going to go into complete detail on everything, but I can answer the questions. Hopefully, I can answer them during the presentation, but if afterwards you have questions, I'll be free to answer those. So first off, I wanted to just go through a quick background, the history of the specific plan. So in 2000, in 1995, the first specific plan was adopted. It's somewhat dated now, needs revisions. It does not do a good job of guiding the future growth of that area or address how to revitalize the area. So through this presentation, I hope you'll understand how the tools that are in this plan are geared towards spurring future growth and revitalization of that area. In 2016, that's what planning, the city council gave direction after a strategic planning session to move forward with the specific plan. Since then, staff has been working and had three public workshops with the Planning Commission. Those have been conducted down in Old Town. We've also conducted numerous stakeholder meetings and communications with property owners, school districts, Caltrans, residents, and other organizations in the area. We've also had our final Planning Commission hearing in October. I'm glad to state that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the plan that's before you tonight. To give you an overview of what a specific plan is, it is the zoning for the underlying area within the plan. It does replace the conventional zoning. It gives more guidance and specific standards for that area as it develops and revitalizes. For the noticing that we've done for this, the property owners within the plan, and also the property owners within 300 feet of the plan, have been notified twice via mail. We've also compiled a distribution list of residents that have come to these meetings, and we've also been communicating through email and notifying them of upcoming meetings. And we've also posted the document online. To give you an overview of the specific plan, I want to focus on five main takeaways that you can pull from to just give you a general understanding of what the plan is geared for and what it should achieve. One of the main changes to the plan is the scope of the specific plan area. We've included the margins around the specific plan, and I'll get into detail on that, but it's increased substantially. We've also increased the land use density. We've introduced changes to 7th Street. We're emphasizing Route 66 and Old Town's history. And we're also providing an implementation path forward. First off, the specific plan area, one of our first objectives with the workshops that we've conducted was, what is Old Town? What should it include? As you can see on the left there, the specific plan area, the existing one spanned mainly from Forest Street down to D Street. The revised plan before you tonight includes the area south down to Mojave, and it also expands across the railroad tracks, includes East Street all the way to the Mojave River and a portion of Stoddard Wells Road. The reason for the, some of the jagged edges to the plan is that that's how it follows the property lines in those areas. Increasing density, one of the things we were thinking of when developing this plan is how do you encourage revitalization? How do you build a better community? One of the things is increasing the density of the number amount of rooftops in the area to support the commercial. So some of the, you could see here our land use plan on the right-hand side, and some of the residential components and the amount of units per acre. The main area, the central area of the plan is our mixed-use retail area along 7th Street. For vertical mixed-use, which has commercial on the bottom and residents above, developer could come in and propose something up to 35 units per acre. One of the main discussion points, and we've received a lot of feedback from the residents on this, the feedback we've received was, we need to bring back on-street parking. People are driving too fast through here. It's become a commuter travelway. It's not safe for pedestrians. So part of this plan is, sets the groundwork for bringing forward new public improvements to 7th Street, which would include on-street parking, parallel parking. There would be a center turn lane and one lane in each direction. This would span mainly from D Street to Forest Street. At the intersections, to increase pedestrian safety, the intersections will be choked further with bulbouts. And as you can imagine where the parking is right now, it would be a pedestrian refuge that minimizes the path that they have to travel to get across the street. So the areas where you see parking there at an intersection, there would be bulbouts that have a raised six-inch curb where there's more pedestrian space that's free of traffic. A large part of the plan and its development standards focuses on the history of Old Town. We want to maintain the character and preserve the history. So through development standards, through design guidelines, the plan focuses on emphasizing that Route 66 from architecture from turn of the century to that mid-century architecture that you'd see for Route 66. Also through development standards, even though it does allow up to 35 units per acre in some areas, there is standards as far as the massing, how tall these buildings can be. As you can see in this diagram here, it would go up to three stories maximum. So it would still keep the character of what was previously there. Also, there's programs, and I'll discuss that in the implementation phase, but we would encourage walking tours, wayfinding signage, and rehabilitation funding, and that's included in the implementation plan. Also, historic preservation. Our current booklet that we have, we have a list of points of interest in the city. What it would do is take those points of interest, historic points of interest, and provide some guidance for what will happen when there's changes and modifications to those buildings. It also will provide guidance for future designations of historic properties. With property owner consent, we would be establishing a more robust list of these historic properties and guiding their preservation. Councilmember Gomez asked the question of the long-term goal. This is all stipulated in the implementation plan. We do go over priorities. What is our short-term priorities? What is our midterm priorities and long-term? Long-term is over seven years. She mentioned the crossing. The plan contemplates relocating the 6th Street crossing over the BN South rail to 7th Street. It would improve circulation and not require us to put in another signal on 6th and D Street. That is part of the plan. That is a long-term goal. And it identifies funding sources. So we have a menu, if you will, of potential funding sources for these improvements as we move forward. And we also designate the responsible entities, whether that's staff or organizations within the city. We have responsible bar... Also historic preservation. Our current booklet that we have, we have a list of points of interest in the city. What it would do is take those points of interest, historic points of interest, and provide some guidance for what will happen when there's changes and modifications to those buildings. It also will provide guidance for future designations of historic properties. With property owner consent, we would be establishing a more robust list of these historic properties and guiding their preservation. And then lastly, the plan provides an implementation plan. Unlike the current specific plan, this gives us a roadmap, an action plan, if you will, of what staff will focus on as we move forward with the task to revitalize Old Town. Councilmember Gomez asked the question of the long-term goal. This is all stipulated in the implementation plan. We do go over priorities. What is our short-term priorities? What is our midterm priorities and long-term? Long-term is over seven years. She mentioned the crossing. The plan contemplates relocating the Sixth Street crossing over the BN South rail to Seventh Street. It would improve circulation and not require us to put in another signal on Sixth and D Street. That is part of the plan. That is a long-term goal. And it identifies funding sources. So we have a menu, if you will, of potential funding sources for these improvements as we move forward. And we also designate the responsible entities, whether that's staff or organizations within the city. We have responsible parties that would move forward with that. Just to give you a snapshot of some of the short-term goals that we're working on, lighting improvements in Old Town, Seventh Street improvements, as I discussed, with bringing back on-street parking and the pedestrian bulbouts. We're also looking at funding sources. Currently, CDBG funding we have reserved to bring forward facade improvement programs to the area. We also have in the plan discussing bringing forward task force groups to help push the revitalization forward. There's associations for Old Town. Those are all listed in the implementation plan. So I'd like to say that this does lay the ground rules. It does lay the foundation for the future growth of Old Town. And I would like to say this was a collective approach from staff. We collaborated very well with bringing this before you, and we're available if you have any questions.
Not to jab you, but you said you're available for questions. However, every time I ask for questions to be done, the city manager has said, per the municipal code in his discretion, that I am not allowed to ask staff any questions, even though the municipal code states that city council has that exception. So I thank you for your comment, but I want to make sure I put it in the record.
And to the extent you do have questions, you can ask me or submit them in writing. Councilmember Gomez?
As a point of order, I have. I have not met with you in terms of the Green Tree Project. We have not met, and I've already asked for your full year's calendar to make sure I'm accommodating yours, and so far it hasn't happened.
As a point of order, Ms. Gomez, you are completely out of order.
That was my point of order, and I was able to speak. Thank you very much.
Please continue. I'm sorry for the interruption.
At this point, I'm available if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the one question that wasn't addressed at the moment was the lounges and the bars. We do have currently a couple of owners, maybe perhaps one, perhaps in the audience, and I know is very concerned about his business. So I want to know how that's going to function.
Yeah. So right now, the plan does allow for bars as accessory to a restaurant. It also does allow for microbreweries. But as far as this point, any nightclubs or straight bars, it does not permit those.
What did you say, popperies?
Microbreweries. Those are conditionally permitted in the plan.
Nightclubs are not allowed, but you said...
Your time is up.
Bars with restaurant, right?
Correct, yes. Through the alcohol beverage control...
The five minutes are up.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. At this time, I opened the public hearing, and I do have some cards. I will call out the names here. The first card that I have is Robert Arvizu, and then after Robert will be Christine Quick.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Robert Arvizu, a member of Root. I'm here tonight in support of the Old Town specific plan. As Root, our first task was to meet and survey the community. What are their concerns? Well, safety. We feel Root and the residents of Old Town, by adopting the specific plan, it will help in addressing the safety issues expressed by the residents, like the lack of lighting in the area, the neighborhood homes and commercial buildings that are vacant and boarded up, which are havens for the homeless and wrongdoers. It produces trash accumulation, defecation, poor health, and fire concerns and fire hazards. Another safety issue, speeding traffic on Seventh between Forest and D Street. We believe with the reinstallment of parallel parking, it will help slow the flow of traffic, which will make it safer for the residents and also will help businesses attract customers. We know there's concern throughout the city, but by placing Old Town as a priority, I feel that it would be expressing the commitment to a beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Quick, and after Christine, Richard Matias.
Hello, I'm Christine Quick, resident of Old Town and a member of Revive Our Old Town. Thank you. I want to thank you for your time and consideration of your new Old Town specific plan. I think it will do wonders for your city and will make it a safer place for all. I look forward to the adding of new lights. I look forward to better parking, and I look forward to slowing traffic. I think this will help to improve things greatly, and I appreciate your time and consideration, and I hope that you will vote for the Old Town specific plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard, and then after Richard is Brian, and I'm not sure of the last name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Richard Matias. I'm an owner of Route 66 Billiards, and I'm a proud member of Roots. I'm here to speak to you about the specific plan. I'm for it because of a number of reasons, mostly safety. It's going to slow down traffic. Lighting is going to deter crime. There's no reason that downtown Victorville has been neglected for so long. Please, I believe you guys will do the right thing. Have a good night.
Thank you. Brian, and then after Brian, Jennifer Neri.
Good evening, Councilmen, and good evening, Mayor. My name is Brian Nightson. I'm part of the Youth Advisory Board with the Fan Spot. Originally came here to spoke, well, address about the issue of the lack of lighting in downtown Victorville. And, well, I wanted to say thank you for approving the budget for Old Town, but I urge you, and we urge you, to approve the specific plan so we can get lighting and ensure the safety of our residents. And so me, my associates, and the advocates and the family assistance program can see change and improvement for Old Town, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer, and after Jennifer, Erica Montes.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor and council members. I'm Jennifer Neri, a resident of Old Town Victorville and a member of Root since November of 2015. I was one of the residents who first spoke before council, asking for you all to pay attention to and not forget about Old Town Victorville. It has been nearly, it has nearly three years since we first introduced ourselves. Since Root and the city of Victorville have established an excellent partnership with one another, and we appreciate this. We also want to thank the city and city staff for working with us and the residents of Old Town by bringing your workshops to our area and allowing us to help shape the plan for the Old Town Victorville. We just ask that you continue to keep us involved when establishing associations in regards to Old Town. We, as Root, are striving for a safer Old Town for residents, businesses, and visitors. We believe the adoption of the specific plan will help guide the city in the right directions towards a safer Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Montes, and then after Erica, Carla Portillo.
Good evening. My name is Erica, and I am a member of the Fan Spot, the youth drop-in center that opened in my neighborhood. I want to thank you for waiting to invest in my neighborhood. We want to see more safe places to help out after school and have fun. Thank you for helping us because together we can make a safer community.
Thank you. Carla Portillo, and then Cecilia Olvera will follow.
Good evening. My name is Carla Portillo. I'm asking you to pass the specific plan one step forward towards getting our new lights in Old Town. I want some, I want more lights by my house on Forest Avenue so there can be less accidents. I just want it to be a safer neighborhood for people. Thank you.
After Cecilia, Ruth Cordova.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Cecilia, and I am an Old Town resident. For the last three years, I have been really involved in my neighborhood. I have attended neighborhood-led forums and city-led workshops. I have participated in neighborhood cleanups, and I have led a monthly fundraiser event to raise money for our Old Town community mural. I do this because I care about my neighborhood, and even though we sometimes don't hear the best things about our neighborhood, I know there are a lot of people that, like me, care. This is why I'm excited to see the council, the city, sorry, the city adopt this new plan and commit to working with us to continue to remake our neighborhood what we want it to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth, and after Ruth, Jose, no last name. I'm sorry? It says B1. You'd rather change it to, okay, not a problem. Jose?
Buenas tardes. Disculpe, no hablo mucho inglés.
Just a second, we don't have a quorum.
I'm going to be a translation, so he's allotted six minutes.
Este, buenas tardes, buenas noches. Estoy aquí porque me llegó una carta en donde se me explica, bueno, está en inglés y no le entiendo mucho.
Hi, I'm here this evening, and I've received a letter in English, and I'm not understanding why it's not in my language.
Que cuatrocientos acres de Old Town, no sé qué van a hacer. Le pregunté a mi vecino.
I'm absolutely clueless as to what this 400 acres is. I had to actually go to my neighbors and see what this was all about.
A él también le llegó la carta, y me dijo que lo que él le habían comentado es que piensa en tirar, piensan tirar muchas casas y edificios en esta parte de Old Town.
His understanding of this letter was something about doing away with residential commercial properties, things of that nature.
Bueno, pues estoy aquí para informarme de qué va a pasar. También le pregunté a otro vecino, y me dijo que, que sí, que incluso ya aprobaron. Mi preocupación es que, que dice, me estaba diciendo el otro vecino que sí, ya aprobaron y van a tirar las casas y te van a dar lo que ellos quieren por tu casa, por tu terreno. Entonces, eso es lo que, pues me preocupa un poquito eso, porque, bueno, pues si, si tira mi casa y, y me van a dar lo que, lo que no lo justo, pues es, bueno, yo estoy pensando que sería por la, que tendría que compensarme con otra casa donde yo pueda vivir en otro lugar. Eso es lo que, la información que yo quisiera saber.
So I'm here to gather more information about what's happening with this Old Town, and I talked to another neighbor, and the neighbor told me that basically I'm going to be left without a home, I'm going to be given scraps, my home's going to be appraised at pennies, and I'm not going to have anywhere to live. So I want to make sure that my property value, I'm rewarded accordingly, and this really worries me, and it's to certain regard, very frustrating. So I'm here to look for more options, more answers, and more responses, and this is something that I'm very upset at the moment. You know, I can't think about how to even fathom about this information.
Sí, eso es todo. Gracias.
That's all my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, I don't know how we're going to handle this, but we do not have a quorum.
You have a quorum.
Okay, those were the only cards that I had. So at this time, I closed the public hearing. So then we have a motion?
I believe that gentleman's public comments, so I think we're good to go. Consideration of a motion for this item, and the city clerk will have to read the title of the ordinance, assuming there's a motion to that effect.
I want to move the adoption. I want to move it specifically for discussion at this time, because I have some questions of the attorney in regard to the actions that the city council may take. We have to have a discussion. I don't know if I can make a, I don't want to make the motion. If I make a motion for approval, can we still have that same discussion and then change the motion?
Yes, typically, typically if you have a motion and you get a second on the motion, then there can be further discussion regarding that motion.
In that case, then I'll make a motion for the adoption of this specific plan as recommended by staff.
Second, that would then require the city clerk to read the ordinances, because I assume your motion would also then include the waiving of the, full reading of the ordinances.
Now, the questions that I had, may I?
Yes.
I feel for the gentleman that was just here. If you get a notice from the city, it seemed like to me you would go to the city and ask the questions, and we have a large number of Hispanic people, Hispanic-speaking people here that can answer those questions. I'm not sure why anyone would go to a neighbor and let, allow them to scare you without going and finding out and waiting until the hearing to try to get the answers to the questions. I'm not sure what the questions are. Some neighbor has told you about taking the property, and that has nothing to do with this plan. I'd really like, somebody ask him, somebody to interpret, why didn't he come to the city if he got the notice from the city? And the city would have provided an interpreter, and he'd gotten his, his questions answered to do nothing but to listen to the neighbor and then come here tonight to try to get the questions, just in my opinion, defies logic.
Mr. Mayor Protem, in that regard, staff, if the gentleman is still willing to come to City Hall, we'll still extend an opportunity to meet with the resident and have a translator available so that we can interpret what is in the letter and answer any questions he may have.
Can I explain this to the gentleman? Señor, alguien de la ciudad va a hablar con usted? Le van a dar un intérprete? No aquí, pero tiene que ir a la ciudad. Pero alguien va a hablar con usted. No hay necesidad que esté asustado.
Can you translate what you just said, please?
What I said to him was that someone from the city would be contacting him, and he will be able to get his answers, answers to his questions, and there's no need for him to be afraid. The city's willing to talk to him.
Question for staff. Is there anything in a city plan that forces anything to happen? Or is this essentially a planning document defining the direction we think we want to go? I'm not going to make that as a statement, I'm going to ask it as a question.
The answer to that question is yes. That's in fact what this document is, is a planning document. It serves as guidance for all land use going forward, and it helps protect development when development does occur, that everything to occur thereafter happens in an orderly way.
And as a point of order, our two minutes for council to be able to speak was over, and I'd like to make sure that's on the record.
According to what I have understood in the interpretation, his fear was taking away the value, leaving him homeless, taking the property, none of those things. leaving him homeless, taking the property, uh, none of those things occur. And while I think that he still has questions that could be answered by staff and, and should be answered by staff, there's no reason to hold it up and therefore call for the question.
So I have, we also have comment as a point of order.
Okay.
I have a motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. I'm gonna read the ordinance before questions and comments. An or, ordinance number twenty-three eighty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville adopting the zone change portion of case number PLA N eighteen dash zero 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 four six, a change in zone to reclassify approximately four hundred twenty-eight acres of property from existing specific plan. Conservancy and floodplain, public and civic, single-family residential, minimum building site, half acre, single-family residential, multifamily residential, multifamily residential, and C-one neighborhood retail service, C-two general commercial, and M-one light industrial to specific plan. Ordinance twenty-three eighty-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville adopting the specific plan amendment portion of case number PLA N eighteen dash zero 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 four six, an update and expansion to the Victorville Old Town specific plan. Is there any further questions or comments?
As a point of order, I'd like to express and put on the record that we have specific ways of asking and questioning, so in error, the city clerk has allowed and implied that we can ask questions. However, this portion is not for questions but for comments. So I do have a comment. And I'm gonna say this in Spanish first. Desafortunadamente, señor José, usted tuvo alguien que estaba hablando ahorita al inglés diciendo aproximadamente que fue un mis, una, un entendimiento malo que usted recibió acerca de su vecino y que usted se va a proveer a una persona que hable con usted el idioma para que usted entienda y sepa cuáles son sus derechos y pueda agarrar las frustraciones y tirarlas a un lado. So what I told this gentleman is unfortunately, he was being spoken in a language that he was not understanding. Um, in English, while Mr. Cox spoke, however, Cox did say that he would be provided with a translator that would throw his frustrations basically out the door and the interpreter would be able to clarify any mis, misnomers or anything that were, would not be clarified to him. And for my addition of comment, just for the root individuals that are here, this is not about the street lighting. The street lighting was already approved. So the, this specific plan doesn't have to do with that. We already approved that section of it. Um, also with safety, in the nineties, we had security. I don't see anything in a specific plan that talks about security. So I wanted to make sure there's some clarity in that term, so perhaps we can add something like that in the future.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negrete absent.
Now we move on to consent calendar. And consent calendar items, C-one through C-seven can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be, uh, pulled for discussion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I'm going to be putting, pulling item C-one, C-two, C-six, and with one motion, I'd like to, do with one motion, C-three, C-four, C-five, and C-seven.
I'm going to second the emotion, the motion to approve those that have not been contested or need to be pulled. And Madam Clerk, you're gonna have to read those for the record.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox for items C-three, C-four, and C-seven.
And includes C-five.
C-five.
So for item C-one, talking about money. Who handles it? How is it administered? Who spends this revenue? When did Vemus originate? I'm assuming it was in two thousand six. And those bonds, how are they up to date in cost or in what we have to expend? And specifically, what are the items up for collateral? What year and under what council member was this direction done? And briefly contextualize the data results, the interpretation for council and its audience in terms of cost efficiency and cost analysis.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, C-one is, um, your standard quarterly report for Vemus, which is the Victorville Municipal Utility. And what C-one is actually showing you is the, uh, operating results, the sale of electricity, the peak demand of electricity over that quarter, and also your gas sales. It also contemplates a small business model providing, uh, the supply of electricity from the Boulder Canyon Project, which is also the Hoover Dam. Very generally speaking, uh, what it's showing you is the quarterly, uh, usage is, is fairly flat in comparison to previous year, uh, reflecting your summer months. Uh, the questions that were asked directly, um, of Councilmember Gomez, when was Vemus, uh, Vemus started? I don't have the exact date in front of me, but I recall it dating back to two thousand four-ish. Uh, we can get you an exact date. Um, as to the bonds, um, we've discussed the bonds that are, uh, revenue bonds, lease revenue bonds, um, that are paid for by Vemus out of operating revenues of the utility. The bonds are actually current, um, the electric utility operates, uh, to where it generates more than sufficient revenue to satisfy the debt service of those bonds and there have not been any issues, uh, with respect to repayment of those bonds. Um, as to the collateral, the lease revenue bonds, um, do have a security pledge, um, of a variety of different city buildings. All of that of, uh, we've shared with you, um, in the past. Some that come to mind without the documents in front of me include City Hall, uh, the golf course, fire stations. There's probably some parks in there as well. Um, and as to, um, the timing of those bonds, I believe those were issued back in two thousand seven. Um, and I can confirm that separately. And as to the council members, uh, good gosh. I'd like to follow up with you on that, just to be accurate as to which council members were on the council at that time. It was over ten years ago.
For C-two, what caused the delay of October sixteenth, October thirtieth, and the November six minutes to be adopted, adopted on the following meeting, which was November sixth? Um, that's nearly a month and a half ago. It could be, it could have been done on November sixth. I'm interested and curious in understanding what transpired. And for the sake of conformity, why isn't this particular agenda item under forms and agenda structures?
The reason why the minutes weren't on last meeting was because it was an election and we try to keep that agenda light.
And the following question was, it's not following structure as the rest of the agenda items?
You'll have to show me. I don't know what you're.
Okay, I'll show you later. Thank you. And then for item C-six, what was the total investments for the twenty eighteen nineteen, twenty seventeen eighteen, and the twenty sixteen seventeen? I'm talking about the investments. How many entities is the city investing in? Uh, please list them verbally and please explain the bar graph in detail in relation to the portfolio. I'm also requesting a meeting with staff, uh, at my convenience, with no restrictions, as to be able to understand this furthermore. I'm available all this week at nine in the morning and the following at nine as well.
So, Madam Mayor, City Council, uh, to answer the question regarding the C-six, the question related to what entities are invested in. The majority of the city's money is invested in, uh, in the organization called LAIF, which is a, um, LAIF stands for the Local Agency Investment Fund. It's organized by the state of California. Um, it's probably the most conservative, uh, investment option available to the city. Um, most of the money is invested there, though, for those opportunities that are not, where the money's not invested in LAIF, they're invested into a variety of certificate deposits at Desert Community Bank. And, um, any other balances are invested per the documents that govern the investment of those, uh, funds, namely, uh, bond reserve funds. And they're, and the banks that hold the money in, in accordance with the trust documents of those respective, um, bond funds.
Okay, and then back to C-two. If you look at every agenda item with the except of, with the exception of C-two, they are followed with a logo, agenda item, consent calendar, or some type of topic matter submitted by, and then there's attachments with subjects, recommendations, and discussion. So I've ran into the habit of looking at certain formalities for com, for compliance of, of what I'm seeing. So that's what my question was. This was the only one item that I saw that it didn't follow and so that's why I was questioning the structure of non-conformity with that one paper.
I'll have to look into it.
And that is it. So with this, I move C-one, C-two, and C-six for approval.
Mr. Kennedy made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Made the motion?
Mr. Kennedy made the motion.
Second was Ms. Gomez.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negrete being absent.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D-one, request to approve a piggyback purchase of three Kenworth T-three seventy conventional cab trucks. Um, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council and Victorville Water District Board of Directors award National Auto Fleet Group the piggyback purchase of two twenty-nineteen Kenworth T-three seven zero conventional cab three axle trucks with Roger fifteen-foot dump body and one twenty-nineteen Kenworth T-three seventy conventional cab two axle truck with Rogers ten-foot dump body in the total amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-three cents under the Sourcewell, formerly National Joint Powers Alliance, contract number zero eight one seven one six dash NAF and as budgeted for in the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, capital improvement project budget.
Thank you. At this time, uh, council members, uh, any questions of staff? I'll start with Mr. Kennedy.
No.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, for item D-two, is this approximate seventy thousand dollars yearly expense? What is the total anticipated project cost? And I also like a copy of the techniques that focus on the financial value added to the cost benefit analysis done by our staff for items D-one and D-two.
It'd be two. I thought we were on one. Maybe I'm lost.
We're on D-one.
D-one.
So that's the same question for D-one and for D-two.
I'm not quite understanding the question. What's the question?
So the question still stands, whether it's D-one or D-two, so I'll repeat them again. What, what is the approximate, I'm sorry, please order. If some, if she continues to scream, I'm gonna ask for one of the police officers to please have her step out for fifteen minutes.
You don't have the authority to do so.
As a point of order, if this woman is interrupting, I would like someone in our police force to make sure, stand by her and have her be a little silent. Thank you. I appreciate that. So for I, for item D-one and D-two, the same question is for the value, are these yearly expenses? And what is the total anticipated project costs?
Well, so the cost is in there, but no, these are one-time expenses. These aren't going on every year. These are just, uh, vehicle equipment purchases.
One-time expenses for both of them?
Yes.
Okay, and then, this is not a question, this is just a request. I like a copy of the techniques that focus on financial value added for the cost benefit analysis that staff did for items D-one and D-two. Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards. Did anybody else have a question?
No, since we have discussed item B-one and B-two at the same time, move to approval of both.
No, we were just on D-one. She's jumping to D-two. We're on D-one.
Need a motion? Is there a?
Yes, I need a motion.
Motion to approve item D-one.
I make a sub-motion to approve item D-one and D-two.
I cannot do that. I'm on item D-one.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox.
I'm sorry, as a point of order, there was a subordinate motion, so we need to have clarification by Mr. Cox if that was for the first, because usually it takes priority and legal can confirm that.
Mr. Cox, I assume your second was on D-one?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox for D-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negrete being absent.
Now we are on item D-two. Request to approve a piggyback purchase of a Vactron vacuum excavation system trailer. Um, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council and Victorville Water District Board of Directors award RDO, Vermeer, the piggyback purchase of a Vactron vacuum excavation system trailer in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents under the Sourcewell, formerly National Joint Powers Alliance, contract number zero one two four one eight dash VRM and as budgeted for in the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget.
Thank you. At this time, any questions of, um, staff by council members?
My same question stands. You've answered it. My same request stands, so staff, um, please take note of that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez. Any further questions or comments?
I do not have any speaker cards, so we're okay with, uh, motions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negrete absent.
Now we move on to item D-three. Quarterly report of pace assessment activity and authorization of continued availability of pace program, programs. Uh, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council review and file the quarterly report of property assessed clean energy assessment activity for properties located within Victorville's jurisdictional boundaries. Approve resolution numbers eighteen dash zero eight eight, eighteen dash zero eighty-nine, eighteen dash zero ninety, eighteen dash zero nine one, to enable continued pace program availability and associated assessment proceedings by Golden State Finance Authority, California Statewide Proceedings Communities Development Authority, and California Municipal Finance Authority for properties located in Victorville. And approve resolution number eighteen dash zero nine two to approve an associate membership in the California Enterprise Development Authority, Joint Exercise of Powers Authority, and enable pace program availability and association, associated assessment proceedings by SEDA for properties located in Victorville.
Thank you. Questions of staff at this time, or council members?
Yes, um, on what date did the city approve the quarterly reports? Just remind me, ever since that day, how many quarterly reports has staff and administration looked over? How many did the city council review? This is my first understanding. That's the first one that I recall. What did you mean by renewal energy generation? Um, are you attempting to say solar, wind power, hydro power, hydroelectricity, geothermal, et cetera? What do you mean by water efficiency improvements? Are we talking about water boiler installations? What do you mean by the electric vehicle charging infrastructures? Is that placing charging stations as, for example, in the mall? What's the list of other that was included? It wasn't predefined. Would you please predefined the word communities, facilities, district? And provide a hard copy of each that belong in the city of Victorville? And name a handful of them in public so I can become familiar if I'm understanding them or not? And define the purpose of the city's role with C-S-C-D-A, open space programs. How does the city connect and negotiate with the California statewide Communities Development Authority? And please contextualize within the PACE program how the conduct of the, conducting contractual assessments proceedings and living a contractual assessment is defined. I'm thinking money, living, taxes, fees, assessments, in that category. That's why I'm asking the question. And how does the California Municipal Financial? How does the California Municipal Finance Authority function within PACE in connection with the city resolution? Are they one in place or are we adopting them? And again, who is California Enterprise Development Authority, FIG-Tree, PAGE program? And why is a resolution necessary? Are we the city adopting a JPA and how many members are going to be participating, if any at all?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request that Ms. Gomez submit her questions to the city manager in writing and the city manager make a determination about whether any of them are worthy of response and let us know how much time is gonna be required to respond to this endless list of questions that could probably be answered if she would read the staff report, study the issue, and come to a meeting prepared rather than just to waste an incredible amount of time asking inane, pointless, and meaningless questions. Do I need to put that in a motion?
I have the right to have those questions. I have the right to have those questions answered, just like you just did.
And you should submit them to the city manager.
And I have, and they don't get answered as quickly as yours do. I'm not status quo.
Okay, I need to have order here, and do we need a motion on this now?
I believe it was done in the form of a motion, was it not? You said you started with a motion.
That's in the form of a motion if you got it all.
I don't have any speaker cards, I need a motion, and then we can continue.
Well, I'm gonna second it because I wanna make comments.
Have comments?
Well, after, yeah, I'm, there's a motion, I second it, I do have comments, yes.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Cox, to end the questions.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you for your small city clerk, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
A year ago, all of this came before the city council. There were public hearings, and the principals requested it, and property owners requested it, and the city council could have approved it at that time because anything that is related to a property assessment has to be approved by the city council. I was leader of the project, and rather than approve it, which would have made it effective from now on, I asked that it be approved for one year. And then we would address it to see if there'd been problems, and if there were no problems, then go ahead and approve it. I haven't been aware of any problems, and all the questions that have been asked within a public hearing, asked and answered a year ago. That correct? That is correct, okay.
Next second. Can I move on?
Well, we need a vote first on that motion, which was to have the questions be submitted to the city manager and have him respond, based to the extent they're not in the, already addressed in the staff reports.
You made the motion to have-
Yes, that was the motion.
It was seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent and Ms. Gomez voting no.
And Mayor Garcia, we still then need to consider the actual item, which is on the agenda for approval. That motion was just to have the questions submitted to the city manager and have him respond.
Okay, so now I need a motion to approve, okay. I need a motion?
I move approval of the staff report, including the various resolutions named by the city clerk. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, I don't have the appropriate amount of information that I would get during public comment for the benefit of the public, so I'm voting no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no and Mr. Negretti being absent.
Now we move on to item D4. Rotary Club membership. The recommendation here is that the city council approve for the city manager to apply for membership to the Rotary Club. And I do have, I do have one card. Ramiro Rodriguez?
Good evening. I just have a question about the city of Victorville paying for the fee to join the Rotary Club. I know what the Rotary Club's about, business, getting together with the citizens. I was wondering if any future, it could be conflict of interest deemed because the city paid for a private citizen, well, not private citizen, a city employee to do business with the private sector. I don't know if it's a conflict of interest, or also if it's common practice to, for the city to be paying for the city manager, why hasn't every city, was Robertson also funded his membership to the Rotary Club? I just can't, I just see something more important than the actual person himself, as a citizen, this person, the city manager, to join on his own will. You know, somebody that the city's paying him $25.5,000 a month. I think him, as to better himself, he should see whether he wants to join the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the Freemasons, on his behalf, rather than having the city flip the bill for something like that, which would become more him as a private citizen to better himself and the city community. Thank you.
I have a question, what was the $5,000 a month?
The $319,000 a year that the gentleman is paid by the city of Victorville. Thank you.
Oh, that has nothing to do with this question. Let's counsel to just disregard that. The question is whether or not the city council wants to pay for the membership. As far as I know, since the city incorporated, the city council has paid for the membership for the city manager and to the club of his choice that he feels best represents the community.
Are there any questions of staff at this time?
What do you think is the benefit to the city of your involvement as a member of Rotary?
I think it's certainly valuable, from the perspective that allows an opportunity for myself representing the organization to connect with the business community. Gives me a more forced interaction with the business community, allows me to get out more regularly. I have been involved in different service organizations over my time with the city. Quanis is an organization that I've been involved with for many, many years. And very traditionally, whether it was Quanis or other service organizations, that's traditionally been viewed as a cost of doing business, as to previous city management. It's been a longstanding tradition, as it relates to Rotary, to have the city manager involved. The only thing different, and the reason why this is here, is when we negotiated my contract almost a year ago, twenty-three months ago, no, actually not even that long ago, time flies, back in April. One of the things that we both promoted to each other was increased accountability. And this is not a provision that had traditionally been in past city management's contracts. Certainly, it was in my agreement to be more accountable to the council and making the council aware in what capacities I was to go out and represent the city. So that's the only reason why this item is here. I think it's certainly valuable, largely from the perspective that it allows us to stay connected and continue to be connected, be able to answer questions of the community that they have that wouldn't otherwise be asked and answered.
As a point of order, I'd like to place on the record that Kennedy was not timed the two-minute as I have and everybody else should have, so there's a breakage of policy there, and I'd like to make sure it's instituted in our records, thank you.
Could I ask for a clarification?
Yes, when Kennedy began to speak, the time was not on. So in other words, we have a preferential treatment to council members, and I was keeping tabs, but I didn't wanna be rude to Mr. Metzler as he was speaking, so I made sure I wait my turn, and did it as a point of order and addressed it as I have already. So thank you.
Time was-
Yeah, now you are adding it, right? I understand that, and I've been seeing, that's why it's part of point of order and it's on the record, because I'm looking at the time.
Well, you run over the clock all the time, dear. Okay, let's continue on.
Thank you, I appreciate for that confirmation. So I also have a question, I don't know, Madam Mayor, if it's my turn yet, I'll wait for your request. If it's not, then I'll wait my turn.
You can speak, go ahead.
So for D4, I have a couple of questions. What benefit is it that the community will benefit with this passage of this item in terms of the manager, us taxpayers, paying for it, rather than he using his own paycheck, which is also established by taxpayer money, approximately $20,000 a month? I don't know that he cannot afford it. And how is it not an additional appropriations? It does show as not an additional appropriations, I'm assuming that it was probably approved, I just don't know when it was approved, so it's not additional, and I'd like an explanation how it's not additional. And the approximately $1,600, why not 300 a year? I saw something that says 300, so forth and so forth, but we wanna allocate 1,600. I'm not sure why that disparity. And I'd like to see if you would be able to apply service above self, as this Rotary says, by paying for the first year's membership with your money, and then possibly the second year seeking for subsidization from the city as a portion of it.
Anyone else?
Yes. I belong to Rotary, I belong to Elks, I'm a life member of the AMVETS, I belong to the American Legion, I belong to a lot of organizations because I think it benefits me, I pay for those. We're not asking the city manager to join an organization that benefits him, we're asking him to benefit the council, this is for the city council. He didn't have to join anything. It's the city that reaps the benefit of doing this, and he's graciously consented to do it. His contract says he needs to ask, and if we want to have him to represent us at the Rotary, it's yes, if we don't, it's a no. All this other is superfluous nonsense.
At this time, then we have a motion then?
Yeah, I'm waiting for my responses, they were questions, not rhetoricals.
Can I call for the question?
My understanding is Mr. Metzler answered pretty much the questions about the benefit to the city.
No, he did not, or else I wouldn't have asked the same question over. So I'm looking, and I pointed it out to him, but I'm not sure if he realized. Maybe it's just my misunderstanding, it just says President Circle Platinum, 1,200 a year, Gold 600 a year, Bronze 600 a year. So I don't know where 1,600 and so forth comes. So I was seeking for clarification, but if he's already answered that question, I stand corrected, someone made the motion, right?
Yes, my understanding is yes.
Okay, so then someone needs to second it.
Have we seconded?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no and Mr. Negretti absent.
Now we move on to D5. Adjournment after November 20th, 2018 city council meeting to December 10th, 2018. The recommendation is that the city council consider adjourning the November 20th, 2018 regular city council meeting to December the 10th, 2018. Do we have any questions here?
No questions.
Yes, I do. So what's the purpose and who gains from adjourning today's meeting to a Monday, a week after our pre-adopted meetings? Just wondering rationale, as it is, we have few people that make it to our Tuesdays, first, and third. So I wasn't understanding why not the first. I understand there's a December 6th county outstanding new elections certifies the votes. I don't know if that had anything to do with it. The prior Monday from that, the next Monday is Tuesday, but yet we're deciding on a Monday. And I think we just ostracize and marginalize a lot of our newcomers because they're not on top of the Monday meeting, and as you can see, 130,000 people don't fit in this room, so I don't know what percentage will be coming in on that Monday.
The reason for the change of the meeting is addressed in the staff report. The reason to adjourn to the December 10th date is that the December 10th date then becomes a regular meeting for all purposes, and per our policy manual, we can at that point, at a regular meeting, elect offices. And since the election results aren't final until that date, that's the first available date to deal with the election results.
Okay, and finally, this breaks the rhythm and the set patterns for our predetermined meetings. I mean, when I was elected in 2016, there was nothing of that nature, but you just brought up the fact that policy handbook has changed. So I'm assuming that's where our major evidence lies, so I thank you for that clarification.
The issue is the timing of the San Bernardino Register of Voters counting the votes, and those votes do not come out until after our regularly scheduled meeting.
Wasn't that explained in the staff report?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
I didn't have any problem understanding it.
I didn't either.
We're not talking about your discussion, and to keep decorum, it would be best to keep the peace if you didn't always have to jab something when you're no longer elected after the next week. You don't make it easy for anyone up here.
Okay, can I have, can I have a motion here?
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Now we move on to item D6. Professional services provider agreement for fire department medical director. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the service agreement between the city of Victorville and Dr. Franz Bolowich for the fire department medical director at a monthly cost of $1,625, beginning November 2018, not to exceed a total of $32,500, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the customer service order service agreement.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members on this item?
Yeah, am I gonna be getting a response? Because I'm gonna be ceasing my attorney on these, I'm gonna have her watch, just so you know. Because I feel discriminated at this moment, in terms of violation. This is my time to speak.
That's the question.
This is my, I am, this is my time to speak. I'm setting it on the record because this is how we bring up things that are bothering council members as a whole. So what's the length of the contract or the MOU between the city of Victorville and the fire department medical director? How many hours will the director be working a month? What are his duties, what do they include as a director? Is this a contract, an agreement? I think it says service agreement. And please explain your not to exceed 32.500 figure, and then tell me what standard of currency you are addressing this by placing a dollar sign in front of the two digits, split by a decimal, followed by three digits. I'm requesting of the city manager a copy of the fire department medical director's resume and hard copy in my box, no later than Tuesday, December for the first meeting, 2018. Also provide the service agreement slash contract by the affirmation date. And is the city anticipating with the contract half a million more added to the fire department costs? If so, the county services are looking cheaper than the start of the city's fire department.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, everything about this item is fairly well laid out in the staff report. The contract that Councilmember Gomez has asked for is actually on page 1121. And on page two-
I'm sorry, what page was it?
1121 of the agenda. And then on page 1122, it speaks to the term, which is a two-year term. Does talk about the compensation. Sorry, back on 1121, it actually details the scope of services. This is specifically relating to bringing on a medical doctor so that we have a medical doctor able to provide the guidance to our paramedic service. It's something that's required in the overall EMS responsibilities as governed by ISMA. So the price is laid out, it has, I'm not even sure I understand the whole question about comparing county fire service versus city, I think we've already been through that. But this is just one of the next task list items that we have to do to effectively be ready by March 29th to be able to roll out city fire.
And were you able to address the dollar sign, the two digits split by a decimal with three digits? What is that currency, euro currency? I mean, that's pretty much laid out, I just don't understand, your 20 years of experience and mine two years, how this is all laid out?
I'm not sure where you're at, but this is gonna be in dollars.
Okay, so then perhaps staff made an error?
It's possible, but I don't-
Actually, Madam Mayor-
That's just the clarity that I need, you know?
But can you identify what-
There's no need to dumbify my questions by saying it's all laid out, because clearly I don't have 20 years' experience. If I knew, I would not be asking these questions.
Could you identify what page you're speaking of?
Yes.
Because I don't see anywhere where that's-
I was reading in the report. So I'm going to get back to you to get this on the report, because I don't want people to say I'm wasting their time, and I will address it as a point of order and show you the page.
Okay, because I'm not seeing it.
Yes.
I'd like if you'd give it to me, because I read this contract, and I didn't see anything resembling what you're talking about. So when you get back to that question, please give me a copy, thank you.
Okay, I do not have any speaker cards, so I need a motion for this item.
Madam Mayor, move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no and Mr. Negretti absent.
Item D7, sale of property between the Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Seasons Land Corporation. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Successor Agency Board of Directors adopt resolution number R-S-A-18-002, approving the sale of property described as APN number 405-072-32 to Seasons Land Corporation, and authorize the deputy city manager to execute any and all transactional documents to the sale.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by council members?
Jim, do you have any questions?
Mr. Cox?
No questions.
Blanca?
Yes, so how much is the 5% broker's commission in dollars? Who is the real estate negotiator and who's the broker?
Madam Mayor and council, the broker of record for the city and the broker representing the city on this transaction is Caldwell Banker Commercial, Victorville. So, they consult with staff, and so they, together, we negotiate this transaction, or negotiated this transaction. The math is, the sales price here is $85,000. So, let me do the math really quickly. $4,250 is the commission on the transaction.
Thank you, no further questions.
Anyone else?
Yes. Didn't the city take an action? Didn't this council take an action to actually list Caldwell Banker as the brokers for the city?
Mayor Protem Cox, I believe, two months ago, the council approved the contract with Caldwell Banker Commercial for city real estate services. Yes.
Well, that's always going to be the broker, based upon action by this council?
Correct.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards, so I need a motion.
Do you have a speaker card?
No, I have none.
Okay, sorry. Second. Sorry, she was ahead of me. Blanca, second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
Item D eight, purchase of video detection equipment from Iteris Inc. in the not to exceed amount of $99,744.88. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve $99,744.88 for the purchase of video detection equipment from Iteris Incorporated.
Thank you. Any questions from council members of staff?
Yes, would you explain the sole source in terms of timeliness and emergency, not based on a limited company having access to a sole source? I've understood through discussions of other council members outside of the city that sole source is a default when our staff or administration are not necessarily prepared or ready to do a search. And I'm not saying or accusing staff of not being ready, but I want to understand how we have approached this particular item in terms of timeliness and emergency and not fall back on a default that we didn't have enough time to research, so we went to a sole source.
The sole source justification is based on standardization, which is allowed for in our City Code Section 2.28.100. And the justification for that is in the staff report. And we've been using this standardized equipment on our signals for about 20 years. We have 91 signals, and it's compatible with all the equipment that we use on our traffic signals.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
The staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Item D nine, purchase and sale agreement of Victorville Investment Partners for Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the purchase and sale agreement for right-of-way acquisition for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project for Victorville Investment Partners, APN Numbers 480-021-260480-021-30 and 0480-021-61.
Thank you. Questions of staff by council members? No one? I don't have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion.
Move approval of item D nine.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, because it's been impossible for the last three months to be able to set up an appointment with city staff or city manager according to my availability, I'm going to have to vote no on this item. And again, I'm going to make myself, and as I have said, I'm available this week at 9:00 and on, and the following week, 9:00. Preferred to have the 9:00. And I'm attempting on the record again to set up an appointment to understand this specific project that I've not been able to vote on.
Just a comment, I think it is safe to say, I don't think this is a surprise or any violation. This item has been discussed in extreme detail, closed session, when all of us have been present, as we are required to do by Brown Act. Inconceivable to me, there's something that isn't understood about this transaction. But if it isn't, it isn't.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no and Mr. Negretti absent.
Now, we move on to item D 10. Reject all bids for skate park project at Doris Davies Park and re-advertise the project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council reject all bids received and opened for this project and direct staff to re-advertise two separate projects, the skate park and Doris Davies Park and Doris Davies Park Improvements.
Thank you. Any questions from staff by council members? Mr. Kennedy?
Nothing.
Mr. Cox?
I have comments, no questions.
Go ahead.
Yes, how much expenses-
Mr. Cox is speaking.
He has comments. He said he doesn't have any questions.
Comments after the motion. Second, I have comments, thank you.
So, how much, what have we expended up to date, since we have to kind of like restart to put it to two different biddings? How much have we spent? This error is costing our taxpayer money, money for the lack thereof, whatever it is, irregularities, fast speed, election, whatever it may have you. So, I'm just concerned how much thus far we've spent.
I don't have the exact number. I can certainly follow up. The only monies that I can tell you we have spent have been in connection with what's been authorized by this council, and it's likely particular to the design work associated with, with getting ready for the bid. So, I don't know. By chance, do you have a number? Okay.
It's the $42,000 that's mentioned in the staff report. That's the amount that's been spent for design.
My question for clarification is in terms of making a mistake and retracting to get back on track has caused city taxpayers an allotted amount of money. We've already done, like you said, the design work. It's costing $42,000. Now, to be able to retract, this is staff time, staff today, the staff that's sitting on the left-hand side gets paid tonight for being here, regardless of the skate park or not being here. But the amount that you have allocated in hours, I don't know of your salary, I know your salary, how much have we expended? Has there a data analysis been done in that regard to see how much it has cost us? Because this is looking like that to a lot of constituents that I've already spoken to in the last two months.
If the council is asking for an accounting of staff time, I'm sure that's something we can do. Right now, the amount that we have measured is what's been spent on external service needs.
Jim, do you have something?
Well, no, I don't want to interrupt, but I do have comments again. I've got questions, actually, but. We have a request to put this off, so it would seem like that any council member, anyone who has additional questions can ask those. We have plenty of time to get them answered, because this has to come back to the council. And I don't want to jab anyone, but it's, you know, everything that we get is taxpayers' money, but this is development impact fees. Where does develop, just for the record, where does development impact fees come from?
Those are paid directly from builders and developers.
But, so it's not a general fund item, it's not from the taxpayers. I mean, I hate to get technical, but, you know, that's-
Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, you know, it just, we run everything together, and the public doesn't really understand this. But, but anyway, I just had those questions, and I still have the comments after we have the motion and second for comment, and I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, I know we threw around very loosely that it's all taxpayers' money, but yeah, it is taxpayers' money, even when council members abuse it.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, with respect to the $42,000 that's been spoken to for design, I'd like to point out that if we start over this project, it's not as if that money is wasted. We actually have design. That's actually intellectual property. And it's, it's intellectual property, it's a design work that we'll use to actually restart the procurement process. So, it's not entirely lost. So, I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. If no other questions, then can we have a motion here?
I saw move.
Second.
I have comments, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
Well, the recommendation is reject the bids, you know, and to re-advertise the two separate projects, but we have two new council members that are going to be on the council before we even have the opportunity to start advertising. And it seems to me that, I hope that the council would recognize that the two new council members are going to be voting on all of this, and therefore, before we, before we move too quickly, count of the manager and staff that's involved should be meeting, or the manager particularly, to educate, fill in, the two new members who have not had the benefit of this last two-year discussion on this. That way, when we get into the details, they, all of us will hopefully have all the questions answered, and they would be familiar with it. I don't, I don't want to assume that they don't know anything about it, but it seems to me that we'd all be better educated if we had that little delay, recognized two new members are coming on. That's it.
Thank you, that's very generous.
Be understood. It's not a part of the motion. If somebody objects to it, I understand, but it seemed like this would be good for everyone.
So, what was your motion?
Well, go ahead and reject the bids and direct staff to advertise, except don't do it immediately, just wait until we get the two new members on and they get brought up to speed. And that should be very quickly. I'll second that motion. Rep it all together.
I do have a second by Mayor Garcia. The motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I have a comment. So, in terms of looking at the builders and the developers, we all know that builders and developers end up passing the price to those individuals who are paying for the commodities for anything like us. So, I hate to be very technical myself, but it is our taxpayer money. And I hate to be very technical as well, but according to the Community Parks and Rec Survey that we did, our first top priorities did not include the skate park. Our community sought many other things like a water park and other things of that nature. So, I would hate to say that this is just a partisan thing that we're looking at in terms of perhaps having to keep a specific council member, who now Mr. Cox has confirmed that we have two new, not just one, incoming individual. So, I'd like to have that consideration for all of us as well. So, no, that's my response.
So, you're voting against it?
Yes, I'm voting against it.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no and Mr. Negretti absent.
Now, we move on to D 11. Appropriation and expenditure of program income received from Residential Curb Appeal Program Case Number 17-08-09. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 18-095, increasing the CDBG budget by authorizing the appropriation of the program income from Residential Curb Appeal Program Case Number 17-08-09 into the CDBG budget, and approving the expenditure of program income from R cap Case Number 17-08-09 in the amount of $15,150 for future R cap projects.
Thank you. Council members, questions of staff? Jim Kennedy? Jim Cox?
Oh, no question.
Blanca?
Yes, so in the words of our city manager, this is all laid out in this agenda item. However, I'm not understanding how it's all laid out in here. So, my understanding of this in conversations prior to the interruption of me not asking questions directly to individuals here, it's my understanding that with this, what we're doing is, if we had that project for the curbside program, and there's still money allotted, we bring it back to C, to the CDBG. Is that accurate, or is that something different? Would you be able to explain that? If that's accurate, I remember the understanding, but if it's not, please clarify it for me.
So, in this particular case, Madam Mayor and members of the council, the CDBG is the funding source for this Residential Curb Appeal Program. And in this particular case, it funded a loan to a homeowner, and I believe the homeowner effectively was selling the property as a condition to the sale of the property. The amounts loaned to that homeowner to do improvements to the home had to be repaid. So, as a function of the repayment, the question becomes of its deposit and where it gets deposited to. So, it has to get repaid to the CDBG fund. My understanding of this item particularly, and the reason why it's here, is it's here to create an appropriation to the budget on the revenue side to show that money coming in to the city coffer, since it was not contemplated, the repayment of this loan as a part of the original budget process.
Thank you for that explanation. No further questions on this item.
I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Item D 12, adoption of Conflict of Interest Code Amendment. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council, sitting as the code reviewing body for the City of Victorville, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, the Victorville Library Board of Trustees, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Joint Powers Finance Authority, adopt Resolution Number 18-083, amending the city's Conflict of Interest Code to update position, classification titles, disclosure categories, and finally, requirements for all agencies, as well as making certain other minor revisions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, for this one, I had a question early on when it came, when it came on, because there was no explanation. There seems to be some of it, but I understand how we're looking at the FPPC and then, but how is that conflictual? Is it, was there an update of the law in California? Was there an update with the Secretary of State that triggered this? I mean, was it a municipal code? Where is the origin of an updated? I'm sure that it's not just out of thin air, or I would hope it's not. So, I do need some clarification that's contextualized with how this ran about. Is it a state thing that happened, and then it triggers us to automatically do it? Is it in your field?
Every two years, you update.
Every two years?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That is explained in the staff report?
Yes, it is.
I thought so.
Everything is, everything's explained.
I would appreciate if you would be able to keep decorum by not being able to cause humor.
I do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, that's not appreciated of you, Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Garcia.
I now need a motion.
It doesn't matter if you talk over me, it's still on the record. Please, you need to be quiet, or you're going to be asked to step out. This is the second time you're being addressed, Mrs. Martin, okay? Thank you very much for keeping it silent.
You too, Ms. Gomez, please.
Please, Ms. Garcia, it's up here, we work as a team.
I thought we were trying to do that.
We are, so don't call mine when we're not calling out in the front.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I saw move?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Item D 13, settlement agreement and mutual, general release, Mars Pet Care, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve a settlement agreement with Mars Pet Care as successor to Sagebrush Properties pertaining to the ongoing implementation and administration of the Energy Services Agreement dated December 22- of the Energy Services Agreement dated December twenty-two, two thousand four, and authorize its execution with such non-substantive changes as may be approved by the city manager and the city attorney.
Thank you. Again, any questions of staff, by council members?
Yes, this question is for the city attorney, and I would appreciate if Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Garcia would stop stating things that are degrading. We are trying to work here as a team. Believe me, I am trying to work with you as a team. Whether you laugh about it or you're not, we have two more years together. I'm, Kennedy, we don't either. I'm sorry, but Gloria and Cox, we do. So for Mr. Dubornowski, it says such non-substantive changes. We have talked about this particular item in closed session, but not in terms of it being non-substantive changes. It's my understanding that it's more than non-substantive. Perhaps it's the definition that is being used versus an actual settlement that's going to cost us millions of dollars. To me, that's non-substantive. However, you can clarify that for me and give me the settlement amount figure because we know it's already a part of the settlement here. So we don't need to talk about closed session items. We're talking about open session items.
Yeah, the settlement agreement is pretty straightforward in terms of what the settlement amounted is. It is one million dollars and fifty-six thousand dollars. The approval requests that it be approved based on any non-substantive changes, meaning changes that are not in any way impacting the actual transaction. So there are no changes to the agreement that actually impact the substance of the agreement. Non-substantive means little technical cleanup items. And as a matter of fact, the version that's in front of you on the agenda has no required changes. That is one that has been agreed to by the other side, so we can approve it and it will not change.
And lastly, Mr. Dubornowski, I want to thank you for not using condescending language. And I appreciate respecting the fact that as a council member, I do have a voice. So I'm going to say thank you for that, for doing that and respecting my voice right here as a council member. Thank you.
Welcome.
I move the item.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negrete absent.
Now we move on to public comments. And you want to read the statement before I continue with the cards?
This is a time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five seven point nine, Penal Code, Section four zero three.
Thank you. I do have some cards. The first one is Maggie Martin. After Maggie, Rafael Porras.
I'm sorry, I can't. Hi, Mayor. I saw you yesterday, as a matter of fact, at the VVTA meeting. And I'm here because actually my concern is safety.
I'm sorry, your name was?
My name is Charlotte.
Charlotte, uh-huh.
Last name Iradj, I-R-A-D.
That's right. I met you yesterday.
Yes. My concern, I guess, I did not see the officer there at the meeting, but that would be addressed to you as well, is the safety issue at Seventh and Lorraine. I'm there at least, well, this week, twice a week, actually, yeah, twice this week, but normally three times a week at that bus station. And my concern is safety at that bus stop. I am constantly seeing loitering. At times drug use, prostitution.
Ma'am, the comments should be directed directly to the mayor.
It's the entire council. We're dealing with safety here and the people, the taxpayers.
Stop your talking to the.
Yeah, but you have to address to us.
Okay. Safety for, with this city is my concern. I want to be able to ride the bus, get onto the bus safe, and when I get off the bus, be safe. So it's, I know the VVTA in itself at this meeting is not the concern. My concern is the safety issue when I get on that bus. So it's very important that while I'm waiting there, that we find some way, however it is, that the city needs to do it, that we ensure safety for the people that are waiting there. If we need to find a means to find security there, because I've seen security there, but I've also seen those same security guards at times, hopefully it's smoking homemade cigarettes, but I see them smoking. And they shouldn't be smoking in a, in a public place when they're hired by the city or hired by whoever to secure those places. Using frequent cuss words, I don't feel very secure with those security people. It's simple as that. People selling bus passes when they don't work for the VVTA. And it's not the greatest thing. And then what was it, the Friday before Halloween? There was a shooting there about an hour and fourteen minutes after I left.
Thirty seconds.
For the nine o'clock bus. Thank you very much. So that's just something that I would like to see better handled by the city, and I would appreciate that very much. Everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Maggie Martin, and after Maggie will be Rafael Porras.
Good evening, Your Honor, counsel. I have a little something I whipped up to read to Councilman Kennedy that I didn't have when I was here the last time. It goes like this. Dear Councilman Kennedy, I'm first going to address the bitter than the sweet. I appreciate the fact so very much how you have addressed our problem child on the council. Throughout this time, you have continued to speak about how she doesn't bring anything of substance or redeeming value to the council.
As a point of order, make sure you're addressing the entire council.
Nor to the citizens of Victorville. I hope whoever follows in your stead will have the wisdom and discernment to continue the path you have so clearly paved. I want you to know how much I appreciate your years of service to this council and the citizens of Victorville, and how sorely, and how sorely your presence on the dais will be missed. I will never forget your very forthright and candid comments about the issues of the council, and more importantly, how you always approached every situation with forethought, dignity, and graciousness. You have not only touched my mind, but my heart and soul in many, many profound ways. I don't know of anyone whose life would not be bettered, whether in their professional or personal lives, should they look to you as a prime example of how to conduct themselves. You are absolutely in a league of your own, and other comparisons will pale, no matter how excellent they may be, and still find themselves in second place. I guess the best way I know how to express my gratitude is to tell you that not only how you have touched my life, but changed my life. For this, I am forever in your debt. I wish you the best of everything life has to offer you now and always. Thank you, your humble servant, Maggie Martin. And I'd like to give this card to you. May I approach?
Good evening, Mister Counsel. Gloria Jean, I'm come today to say thank you to you, Jean. Eight years, Mr. Cabral introduced it to me.
As a point of order, for the police officer, when you have someone talking like Maggie Martin, that's where you should be addressing. Right now, this man is of color. That woman is white. I do not appreciate that type of color.
A point of order, I will have you removed.
That discrimination right here in front of my face, and that's going to be added to the record.
A point of order, have her removed.
Thank you very much. I'm watching.
Point of order, I will have you removed.
A point of order, we have a white woman three times decorum. This gentleman of color gets approached by the police officer. I'm sorry, that will not continue in this city hall.
Can I have her removed? She has disrupted.
No, you are being disrupted for the decorum.
Blanca, can you please?
Oh, my God.
Please.
You know, I want to continue peacefully. That's the only reason I'm not having her removed right now.
Okay, please, Gloria. Jean, thank you so much. You know my number. I really appreciate what you do those eight years working hard for our community. Thank you, my brother.
Thank you. Lamar Jordan Taylor, and then after Lamar, Ruth Cordova.
Okay, yeah. So my name is L.A.M.A.R.J.O.R.D.O.N.T.A.Y.L.O.R. And I was born January sixteenth of nineteen ninety-one. My son was born October twenty-second of two thousand eight, and my father was born April first of nineteen forty-two. So that's triple sevens across. Rest in peace to my father. So I know that the women's shelter, there were people in there and that weird frontier building that I walked around and stuff like that. It's weird how there's people, I don't know, live action movies, subannual, annual, every two years. I told people that I don't play games with grown ass, oh, sorry, sorry for cursing. My sincerest apologies. I don't play games with adults. I play games with my ten-year-old child, which is my son, which is on an Indian reservation, yeah, A through Z, I don't know, Cheyenne, I don't know. So, yeah, live action movie, yeah, that's serious. That's serious. They're doing a live action movie thing. It's not fair. People are losing lives. There are kids dying and stuff. There are women getting pregnant that, that, like, it's just not fair. And people know about it and stuff because it's like, what is it? It's like South and Woods and like north, up north and Brothers, but there are people who are like easily bought out and whatnot. And that's happened to me because I've been lied to about my probation officer multiple times, which my probation officer is Stephanie Hernandez. My public defender is, well, secretary is Brianna, and my public defender is Alex Freeman. So I don't really know if there's anything much else I can say, but this movie shit is bullshit. People need to be like let out of air conditioners and boarded up buildings and like places with peepholes and everything like that because if not, then there's going to be like serious problems, more serious than was already occurring. And there are a lot more red cars out here. That's pretty awesome, Sauce. Yeah. I don't know. Oh, I saw a coyote for the second time yesterday. So that means L.O.K.I. And then I did research on that, and then that's a tray you. So, yeah, if people like use their brains instead of their, you know, yeah, rear end, if people acted their age and not their shoe size, then, you know.
You have thirty seconds?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I see the, the yellow light flashing thingy. I don't know. That kind of addresses everything, like kidnapping, terrorism, misclassification. I died twice on Seventh. I don't know, we did, I don't know. Yeah. And, yeah, fix it. Or, or maybe you can be put in the same situation or the same boat and see what happens and how you feel when you lose yours.
Your time is up.
I had a hundred percent custody of my son. That guy took him away from me. And my ex had miscarriage over this shit. My mom's went to last day to COPD. My brother has sleep apnea now. Sir, talk to my uncle.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, and fix it, or you could be fixed.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. Ruth, and then after Ruth, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Ruth Cordova, Honorable Mayor, Mayor pretend, City Council. I wasn't going to read this off. I was going to shoot from the hip, but I find it necessary. Some might stumble for words. It is very sad news for all the fellow citizens witnessing the departure of Jim Kennedy, Councilman of the city of Victorville, from holding office. As he stood courageously in the defense, protection, and representation for those that love and seek justice, Councilman Jim Kennedy dedicated his tenure to love, protect, and defend the oath of office and to the United States Constitution, and now is departing during the cause of that effort. In this difficult day, in this difficult time in the United States, we ask ourselves what kind of a nation we are and in what direction we want to move in. For those that act in part of injustice can be filled with bitterness and with hatred and a desire to seek revenge during his departure. We can move in that direction as a city and or country with greater polarization filled with hatred toward one another and in the pursuit of injustice, or we can make an effort in this city and in across our nation to get and go beyond these issues. What we need in the city of Victorville and across our nation is not division, hatred, violence, or lawlessness, but is the love of our country and compassion for those that protected and defended us all despite their sex, race, color, creed, and our national origin. The city councilman Jim Kennedy, the city of Victorville, has committed himself to just that. It is not the end of violence, not the end of lawlessness, not the end of disorder, but the majority of people here in the city of Victorville and across our nation want and desire a better quality of life and to live together. So we must dedicate ourselves to that. We say a prayer as Councilman Jim Kennedy, the city of Victorville, now departs from his position and to the oath of office, and now only pray that he seek a higher calling for the protection and defense for the people of our nation. God bless you, sir. God bless you. You may be gone but never forgotten. The colors yellow mean a new beginning for you. They're, they need watering now. I'm so sorry, but we love you and we always will love you. Thank you, sir. May I approach?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to Blanca for cluing us in and everything that's happening. I learned something today. Asked a question about the city manager getting funded for the Rotary Club. Mr. Cox graciously answered the question that I asked. He said the city thinks he, the city would benefit by having him join the Rotary Club. That's all that we were asking. Same thing with Blanca, is asking all these futile and ridiculous questions. No. A lot of those things, us as citizens, don't know what's going on. I just learned today that forty-three thousand dollars was spent on the designing of the skate park. That money is not lost. It's going to be used for the skate park. But then I saw, I heard also, you know what? Let's not talk about this because two new people are coming in and something's going to happen. So I kind of think that skate park is gone. I think got the ax already today. We just saw the end of the skate park. But another thing, also, what I heard also, that all the questions, that you did a motion that all the questions have to be submitted to the city, to the city manager first. So does that just include the Mexican, Blanca Gomez? Does every, one of you guys have to also submit your questions to the city manager? Or is just, she is just singled out? That's one of the, all the questions I have too. The thing is, there's repercussions for every action that's taken. I understand the meetings go long, questions are asked, but you know, before questions weren't asked, there weren't sixty-six thousand extra people looming ten years, seven years, or eight years ago. Now there's a lot of people here. We asked for translation services. It was denied to us because we didn't speak American. People did their taxes, spoke English. Somebody else preferred to pay for the lights for the Little League people, for the Little League kids. So we're getting conflicting answers here. One of the things is we see the population here is thirty-eight percent of the population does not speak English. I just voted last Tuesday, and my folder was in Spanish and English, and in the back it said like ten other languages. So why can't we get translation services so the people up there can see what's happening and have their hearsay? So a gentleman doesn't have to come up here and says, "The neighbor told me this. It scared me." Now, another conflicting thing, you said eminent domain. I heard that.
You have 30 seconds?
And if that person, if this City Council meeting was translated in Spanish, I know the website is in Spanish too, written, but if it was translated in Spanish right now, more people would be listening in, more people would be asking questions. Not everybody's going to come feel here. But the thing is, thank you, Blanca, for asking those questions. We're listening. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Those were all the cards that I had. Now we move on to reports from our City Manager.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I do have sad news to report. A friend to the city, former Planning Commissioner Bob Wilson, was brought to my attention earlier this week that he passed away due to a heart attack. He served the city's planning commission from 2009 to 2016, so certainly through some of the recessionary time, but did see quite a bit of growth while he was here. He did pass away over the weekend having a heart attack. I did want to share that with you and just wanted to recognize him for his dedicated service and just sad to see him go. He was a good friend of the city. Though I am pleased to announce one of our very own Dana Armstrong. She's our Environmental Program Manager. She's actually been nominated for what's called the Accolade Award. It's an award, it's an annual award that's doled out by the Chamber of Commerce. So due to her involvement, as you saw her here earlier tonight, in managing our recycling programs and solid waste programs, she's been recognized for her efforts and her outreach to the community. So hopefully she'll be successful in that endeavor. And then finally, Festival of Lights and Tree Lighting Ceremony is going to be held on Saturday, December 1st here at Victorville City Hall. That'll be from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The event is free and features Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. There'll be free hot chocolate cookies, horse carriage rides, and holiday arts and crafts. For any questions, you can call Hook Community Center or myself. That's all I have.
The Christmas parade?
Christmas parade as well, same day, that morning.
Let's have a moment of silence for Bob Wilson, please. Amen. Now we move on to E3, discussion and possible action regarding the items for the upcoming City Council agenda. Mr. Kennedy, did you want?
Nope, nothing.
Blanca? I don't have anything either. Reports from council members, three-minute time limit.
Just one thing. I haven't had a chance to meet Ms. Ramirez, so I don't know her. I understand she's a former member of the Copper Mountain College Board, which strikes me as a good qualification. But I have had a wonderful pleasure the last few months getting to know Deborah Jones and her husband, and I just can't tell you how pleased I am that she'll be joining this council next month. So Deborah, best of luck to you.
Jim?
I don't have any comments at this time. No, I don't have any reports.
Blanca?
So I'd also like to congratulate the two incoming council members with the next month, Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Ramirez. This will be a four-women to one council member that you'll be starting to see. Also, with Google Translate, I'm sorry, it does not do service to translate our language, Spanish. It doesn't do service. I've checked it out and I've made a request to the City Manager during the feedback comment, but it was either that or nothing. So just for that, Google Translate doesn't work. I've already tried it. Once again, let's avoid the appearance of impropriety. If you're in uniform and you're in duty, you're here to serve and protect, regardless of color, regardless of gender and class, et cetera. To the sergeant-at-arms, equanimity is very important in City Council meetings. Today, I witnessed a white female on three occasions be louder than what loud can be. Not once did any police officer in uniform address and ask her to please be silent. There was a lack of professionalism, business meeting courtesy and decorum that is expected. However, also being in front of this dais, I witnessed that a young male, who is actually homeless, of color, and lacking money, he was addressed. To me, on the eyes of what I saw, that is discrimination. I hope not to ever see that again in these chambers, because I will call it out again. And if I happen to miss see something, please correct me. Just be aware that I represent any and every single class, the voiceless and those who have a voice. So I expect equanimity in this, we're going to call it courtroom, even though we would have Cox saying, "Yes, police officers, you're doing your job with the homeless." I'm sorry, but they are also taxpayers. And please make sure that you are cognizant of what happens and what I'm seeing as all the other residents are also seeing. And if that was caught on video and caught on camera, someone else might see the same thing, and perhaps that's the wrong perspective. So please make sure that you have equanimity, whether you're a white female and you're being loud. She also needs to be stopped. I had it asked on two occasions indirectly, and it was not geared. I did see Captain motion his behavior and said, "Please stop to that regard." But I don't know if anybody.
You have 30 seconds?
I did catch it, so I appreciate that part. But again, please, I'm watching, and I'm a fervent believer in all of us requiring that same protection. And lastly, thank you, you know, for the two incoming individuals. I hope to work together. You may see some scuffle up here, but you know, I still appreciate Gloria regardless. I still appreciate Mr. Cox regardless. I do have a respect. It looks like I don't, but believe me. I still respect her. She's our mayor.
Your time is up.
Incoming mayor. So I appreciate the fact that she also, you know, she can stand up and challenge individuals. So thank you so much for that.
Madam Mayor and Council, if I could just address something?
Yes, please.
When you asked me, Councilwoman Gomez, if you miss saw something or to address it, as far as this individual, when he first came into this chambers today and put in a speaker's card, there was some concern. Staff brought it to our attention with what he put on that speaker's card. I won't get into it for his privacy out of respect for that.
I know what it is, yeah.
However, we went to address and speak with him to check on his welfare, to make sure he's okay. Everybody has a right to come in here and speak, but also we have to, our job is to also make sure this is a safe meeting. With regard to that, when it comes to now race, he's sitting right in front of me. He was mumbling about if somebody else gets up, he's going to kick their, so he started talking about violence. My deputy didn't go and immediately remove him. He just wanted to calm him down, being familiar with the fact that what he put on his card. We don't want something negative to happen here. So I wanted to address the fact that when it comes to race, and I understand your perception of that, but he sat right in front of me, and we're not going to let a violent act happen in this courtroom, as you called it. So that's why my deputy came and addressed him, only to calm him down. If he was coming up here to remove him, he would have immediately removed him. He wanted to calm him down, which was successful, and he was able to speak. So that's why I wanted to address that when it comes to race. Because in my opinion on that, race had nothing to do with it. It had to do with the propensity for violence.
And I appreciate your concerns and, you know, for that clarity. Mrs. Martin Low actually has an extensive record of harassment, and I've put that record out myself as well. So that's why I compared it, you know? Had I not known about her record, I would have taken yours.
Madam Mayor, it needs to be adjourned to the December 10th.
This meeting is adjourned to December 10, 2018. Thank you very much.